Good morning, it is nine AM. Welcome to today's meeting. At this point, I would like to bring to order the meeting of August twenty fourth. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Janet, could you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Ketchum?
Here.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yeah.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano Quan?
Here.
And staff is represented by Monowitz, Fox, and Montes.
Thank you. Next, we have oral communications. This is for any items that are not on the agenda. The Chair will acknowledge anybody that wants to speak on items that are not on the agenda for a five-minute limit. Janet, could you please explain to people how they can participate on the meeting?
Yes, Chair. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and you may begin speaking. You will have five minutes. At this point, Chair, I don't see anybody with their hand raised and I have not received any written for things that are not on the agenda. Actually, just kidding. I do see one hand raised, Fran Pollard. So let me go ahead and
All right, bring him in.
Ms. Pollard, please accept this invitation and I you microphone and you can begin speaking. Ms. Pollard? Ms. Pollard, can you hear us?
Yes, I couldn't get to the mute, unmute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, all I want to say is when are you going to approve the extended parking at Quarry Park? It is in desperate need. There is overflow parking every weekend now. Lots of different groups are coming regularly and they overlap and so the parking is all over our neighborhoods. And we're getting set up with it because it's not just parking bicycles and dogs running in the yards and they throw garbage in our yards sometimes and there's all kinds of abuse. And I, we definitely have to have that additional parking done. And I understand it's the planning commission that or the planner department that's holding it up. So please give the okay, give the coastal development permit. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pollard. I don't see any, anyone else with their hand raised, Chair.
Okay, seeing that there is no more members of the public wanting to participate in oral communication, I will close oral communication at this time. All right, so next we have the consent agenda. We have two items. Do any of the commissioners want to pull any of the items off the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I saw move that we accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Sir second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Janet, please do the roll call on this.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Serrano Quan?
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Chair Ramirez?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda is approved. So next we have four items on our regular agenda. Janet, could you please read the first item for the record?
Sure, we have item number three. Owner applicant Edward Love, location. I can't really read that, I'm sorry, in Moss Beach. So I think with that, we have our planner Glenn Gia.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Give me one moment, please. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, yes, we're good.
Okay, then now we can get started. Good morning, planning commissioners and the members of public. My name is Glenn Ja, planner with the Department of the Planning and Building. The item before the planning commission today is item three, which is a coastal development permit and design review permit application proposed by Mr. and Mrs. Soderaj. This project proposes to build a new twenty-seven hundred forty-three square feet two-story single-family residence, including including a five-hundred-seventeen square feet attached two-car garage located on a eleven-thousand-five-hundred-eighty-six square feet undeveloped legal parcel in the Moss Beach area of the incorporated Samatelle County. The project involves the removal of one significant tree and only minor grading. The project is applicable to California Coastal Commission. The subject parcel is located in an urbanized, single-family residential neighborhood. The existing parcel is sold for one single-family residential. The parcel size again is eleven-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-six square feet. Water and sewer services will be supplied by the Montero Water and Santer district. And now this parcel is approximately one hundred and fifteen feet from the nearest point of the proposed single-family residence to the coastal block. On this site, you can see the project rendering and site plan. On the left-hand side of the site, it shows the property, it's a site plan of the property. As you can see on the screen, the project residents can, will be accessed from Reef Point Road. And on the right-hand side of the screen, you can see the house design, which primarily use muted colors. As discussing the staff report, planning staff has reviewed the application and conclude that this project proposal is in compliance with the general plan. Specifically, the project is in compliance with policy four-point-one-five, Appearance of New Development, policy four-point-three-six, Urban Area Design Concept, and policy eight-point-three-zero, Infilling. As discussing the staff report, planning staff has reviewed the application and conclude that this proposal, development proposal is in compliance, is in compliance with the local coastal policies relating, relating to locating and planning new development visual resources and regulations of development on coastal flow. The Coastside Design Review Company reviewed the project and recommended approval by making the findings, including but not limited to the minimization of the blockage of sunlight on neighboring buildings, compatibility with the primary roof forms, soap and materials, and avoidance of making the garage a dominant feature as seen from the street. Additionally, the project is in compliance with, is in compliance with zoning regulations, public access policies of chapter three of the Coastal Act of nineteen-seventy-six and Half Moon Bay Airport Land Use and Compatibility Plan. As to environmental review, staff concludes that this application is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to California Environmental Quality Acts, also known as CECLA guideline, section one-five-three-zero-three, class three A, relating to the construction of one single-family residence in an urban residential zone. The project involves a single-family residence in an urban residential zone. Therefore, this project meets this CECLA categorical exemption criteria. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit and design review permit county file number PLN twenty-two-one-dash-zero-zero-two-six-seven by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval identified in Attachment A. Additionally, staff recommends that the planning commission consider accepting the following recommendation. Condition number thirty-five in Attachment A, in Attachment A of the staff report states that trees located within the defensible space shall be prone to remove dead and dying portions and lift up sixty, lift up sixty feet above the ground. Staff recommends that sixty feet be changed to six feet due to the typo. This concludes staff presentation. I'm available for any question that the commission may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Ketchum?
None for me, thanks.
Commissioner Gupta?
I just, just have a question more about the parcel being in airport path or airport, Half Moon Bay Airport Zone Four. What does that mean? And what restrictions does that pose on this parcel?
Yeah, okay, so airport zone four means outer approach slash departure zone, where accident risk level is considered to be moderate. And now in this zone, this zone doesn't prohibit any residential uses. And now the proposed project, staff has found that the proposed project complies with all the development conditions in the safety criteria matrix of the airport then, of the airport policy such as preventing hazard to flights. As a proposed two-story residence does not penetrate the established airspace threshold. So and now also the project size outside of the defined aircraft noise exposure contours. So we don't anticipate high level of exposure to, we don't expect the house exposed to a high level of aircraft noise. So that's staff's analysis on the airport policies.
Okay. What about any kind of like height issues in, in terms of when the construction is taking place? Like there could be equipment that's high. Is that, is that all taken care of in the conditions that we put in as part of the approval?
That has been taken into consideration when staff made our initial assessment on the impacts from the, from aircrafts and from the airport. And now we don't anticipate any high issues associated with the, with the, with this proposed development as it's only a two-story, single-family residence. So for this reason, staff don't anticipate any issues or like impacts on the airport and aircraft safety from the proposed residence.
Okay. Yeah, okay. And, and do any kind of vibrations take place when aircrafts are landing or taking off? Like any kind of vibrations to, to the actual structure of the residence?
So I think I mentioned this briefly previously. So as part of analysis, we look at, we look at the defined aircraft noise exposure contours. I think noises, noise may cause vibration. And now so that has been taken into account. And now we find that the project size outside the defined aircraft noise exposure contours.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Hanson?
No questions.
All right, Commissioner Serrano Quan?
No questions.
All right, no questions for me either. So let's open for public questions.
Hi, we're now opening public comment for item number three. If you wish to comment, please raise your hand now or press star nine if you're calling by phone. Chair, I don't see any hand raised for this item.
All right, seeing that there is no, no one that wants to participate on from the public on, on the item number three, I'm going to close public comments at this time. So any, any additional comments from commissioners? Commissioner Ketchum?
But no comments. Are we going to have the applicant speak or?
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, I think it's time for the applicant or owner to participate. Mr. Love?
Oh, yes, okay. I wanted to make sure I was unmuted. Glenn gave a very good review of the project. Sundar and Hemma. Sundaraj are the owners, not me. Wish I was. The, the house is basically a, a reverse plan house as we often have here in the coast to make good use of the views. It's like, it's the last infill lot in this area. We live about a eighth, a eighth of a mile to the north from it on Wicky Way. So we're very familiar with the neighborhood. And we're happy to have Sundar and Hemma in our neighborhood. It's a modern house, lots of glass to, again, to make use of the excellent ocean views there. And we think it's a good addition to the neighborhood. And I have, I'll answer any questions from the commissioners if they have any.
Sure, okay. Commissioner Ketchum?
No questions, thanks.
Sure, Commissioner Gupta?
No, it, it looks like a very nice design to me. I just wanted to make sure that the airport noise and other safety issues were not a concern here. Looks fine to me. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hanson?
Hi, good morning. I really liked the design. I think it's a very good-looking design.
Thank you.
It has a feature that my house has because I live on a slight hill where the garage is downstairs and the kitchen's upstairs. And there's a, I've lived in here, this house is sixty-four. And there is a consideration you may want to think about as you go forward is no, life happens, you know, your knees hurt, you get the flu or you get something like that. Getting groceries out of your car to your kitchen when you don't feel like it is miserable. You know, bag after bag after, maybe a dumb waiter.
We have a dumb waiter installed in the house.
Well, good, because I didn't see it on the drawings and the first thing I said, you know, there's a phase, you don't want to carry things up those stairs.
Yeah, no, we've, we've done that in a number of houses wherever we have the reverse plan. Because that same issue comes up. The lady of the house says, always says, what about the groceries? You want to drive it, you want to drive into the garage and be able to take the groceries right up to the kitchen and the dumb waiter. So that's what we've done.
It's not the lady in the house, it's me.
Oh, well, okay.
Enough to say, it's my job to get them up. So I just want to say, very well done.
Thank you. Mr. Serrano Quan?
No question or comment for me. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. And same for me. I, I think it's a well-articulated design. Mr. Love, thanks. I, I always like your, your designs for the most part. So with that, I, I'm going to say any, any additional deliberation for commissioners? If not, maybe I'll contemplate a motion.
I'll make a motion. If you're all ready.
Yeah, let's go. Go ahead.
I move to approve the coastal development permit and design review permit county file number PLN twenty-two-one-zero-zero-two-six-seven by making the by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval identified in Attachment A of the staff report with the correction to condition of approval thirty-five for living up trees to six feet off the ground.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Janet, could you do the roll call?
Commissioner Ketchum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Serrano Quan?
Aye.
Chair Ramirez?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is now approved. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Love. Now, we have item number four. Janet, could you please read it for the record?
Sure, give me just one second. Sorry about that. Okay, item number four. Owner Jaya Kamath and Suresh Babu. Applicant Katie Kostiuk. File number PLN two-zero-two-one-dash-zero-zero-four-four-five. Location three-seventy-nine Nevada Avenue in Moss Beach. And we have Summer Burleson.
Good morning, Chair Ramirez and Planning Commission and county representatives. My name is Summer Burleson. I'm a project planner with the Samatelle County Planning and Building Department. And I'm here to present this next item. Let me share my screen. Is this visible?
Yes.
Okay, great. Great, so item four is a hearing for a coastal development permit and design review permit for a new two-story, single-family residence on an undeveloped five-thousand-square-foot legal parcel. The residence will include an attached two-car garage and driveway will be, access will be taken off of Ellendale Street. There will be minor grading and removal of one Monterey Cypress tree. The project location, it is a corner lot at the corner of Ellendale and Nevada Avenue in the unincorporated Moss Beach community. The zoning is R-one S-seventeen D-R-C-D, which is a single-family residential zoning district and design review and coastal zone area. And the surrounding community includes single-family one- and two-story residences. This is the infill lot in that Moss Beach, in this pocket of the Moss Beach residential area. As I mentioned, this is the corner parcel at the corner of Ellendale Street, which you're viewing here from Ellendale Street, Ellendale Street at the front and Nevada Avenue along the left side. There are a row of four Monterey Cypress trees along the street side of Nevada Avenue and one Monterey Cypress tree at the interior rear corner of the parcel. There was the parcels relatively flat, undeveloped. There is an existing, you can sort of see it here in the right corner of the photo, an existing curb cut onto the property and that will be utilized for the new driveway approach to the development. On the right-hand side is the site plan for the project. So you can see the trees. There is one Monterey Cypress tree. Tree number four that is proposed for removal, kind of towards the, the back, along Nevada Avenue. And conditions been included to require replacement at a one-to-one ratio. And otherwise, the remaining three trees along Nevada Avenue and the one interior Cypress tree in the rear corner of the property are proposed to remain on site. There will be a new paver driveway and some perimeter landscaping just around, around the new development areas. The project had designed a stormwater and drainage infrastructure to include a new detention basin in the rear yard as shown here, which will capture the, all of the roof runoff from the new development. Other areas, which is the paver driveway are impervious, but will also be able to run off into landscaping on the site. The first floor of the proposed residence is, as you can see here on the left image, is sleeping quarters. The second floor is the more common use spaces, dining room, living room, kitchen, and a new roof deck over the garage, a portion of the garage on the second floor will come off of the, the second floor kitchen. The proposed maximum height will be twenty-eight feet, which is the maximum height allowed in the S-seventeen district. So the height limit is in compliance. The proposed colors and materials will be more muted colors, natural colors and materials. And the design includes facade articulation on all elevations to comply with the zoning standard for either daylight plain compliance or facade articulation. And some downlights will be proposed along the elevations. And just some additional renderings of the proposal and the colors and materials are better viewed here. The six-foot fence, which is shown in the foreground in the, in the rendering, will need to be reduced down to four feet to comply with our zoning standards for fences along street sides, which cannot exceed four feet in, in height. And additional renderings of the front with the garage and the interior side. And just of the, the rear elevation. So staff has reviewed the project and determined that it complies with each set of policies and regulations, including general plan policies for visual quality, urban land use, water supply and wastewater, and man-made hazards. The project will secure water and sewer service from the Montero Water and Sanitary District and MWSD has reviewed the project and provided conditional approval for services. And with regards to man-made hazards, that's relative to the airport being to the south of the project site. And the project has been reviewed and determined it conforms with the safety policies out of the Half Moon Bay Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. It is in runway safety zone two, which limits residential development to low residential development or infill development. And staff has reviewed the project and the parcel relative to the infill criteria of the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan and determine that it does comply as infill development. And the project will not exceed thirty-five feet in height, which is the threshold from the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan for hazard concerns related to airspace. The project has been reviewed for conformance with the local coastal program policies for locating and planning new development, visual resources and shoreline access. The property is located on the west side of Highway One. And so shoreline access requirements policies are applicable. However, approximately, I think five-hundred feet away, about two blocks away to kind of the southwest is the Fitzgerald Marine Reserve. And which includes parking and access to the shoreline. So that satisfies the requirement for shoreline access. The project has been reviewed for the S-seventeen development standards compliance and that's shown on the table to the right of the screen. And the project does comply with each standard of the S-seventeen district for things such as setbacks, block coverage, height, et cetera. The Coastside Design Review Committee considered the project at their June ninth, two thousand twenty-two CDRC meeting. And they made findings relative to elements of design that the project does, has been designed and situated to fit into the neighborhood relative to scale, size, and architectural style. And they did recommend And they did recommend approval of the project with conditions, which are included in the conditions recommended to you in Attachment A of the staff report. And those conditions include some screening at the rear of the property to help facilitate some privacy screening between the rear of the house to the neighboring property behind that the front upper floor deck railing be changed, which is shown kind of above the garage here to more of a Louverd, I don't know if I'm saying that right, design, and to minimize light fixtures along some of the elevations. And they've specified in the condition the specific elevations, such as the front elevation, having only one light at the upper level, one light at the lower garage level. So their intent was to find ways to kind of minimize light fixtures and light pollution in the area. And the Midcoast Community Council reviewed the project and confirmed they had no comments or concerns. The project is exempt from environmental review pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act Guideline Section 15303 Class 3A relating to the construction of a single-family residence in an urban area that's a residential zone. And so the planning, the staff's recommendations that the Planning Commission approved the coastal development permit and design review permit, county file number PLN 2021-00445, by making, by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in Attachment A of your staff report. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunson. Any questions from commissioners for staff? Commissioner Ketchum?
None from me, thanks.
Commissioner Gupta?
First of all, I would like to really commend Ms. Burleson for the very comprehensive presentation. Thank you for that. My only question is about the lighting. I'm all for this very low lighting, but we need to kind of balance the safety of the neighborhood versus low lighting. Recently, in these last couple of years, we've seen so many robberies and things taking place. And low lighting and things are fine, but people are adding a lot of what I call ring cameras, ring features, which, which increases the lighting, and we need some of those lighting. So I just want to throw that that kind of a balancing thing out there that, that should be kept in mind. That is more my comment than any anything against what, what is being proposed here. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Seranakun?
No questions.
All right. No questions for me either. Do the applicant owner want to say something?
Hey, good morning. I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Katie Kostyuk. I'm the owner of Fatpen Studios and the architect that designed this project. I wanted to echo what you had said, that Summer, that was an excellent presentation. I don't really have much that I'll need to add because you covered it really beautifully. I also wanted to thank the commissioners for their time this morning. I wanted to just add a few little pieces of information that we didn't cover in quite as much detail, particularly about the tree removal. I did want to mention that the one tree that's proposed for removal was actually recommended by the arborist. The owner's intention was to keep all site trees. And unfortunately, that tree was already pretty much dead, so they had requested that we remove that tree. I also have been made aware that pruning has been a concern in the neighborhood. And so we do have a letter from the arborist with additional recommendations for pruning moving forward. It was brought to our attention when he went out there to do a site visit and review it in relation to the proposed design, that some major pruning was done that has actually damaged the trees. And the owners were not aware of that. Our understanding from neighbors in the community was that following a storm, it was either the county or possibly PG&E had come out and done some pruning because one of the branches had fallen. So I did want to make sure that the commissioners were aware that the owners are very committed to preserving the trees that are on site. They're happy to select a native drought-tolerant replacement tree, as Summer had mentioned. And we also have been working on some of the design changes in response to some of the privacy concerns that were captured in our conditions of approval. And if that's helpful for anyone to see, we're happy to share that with you today. If you have any further questions, I'd more than happy to answer them, and thank you again for your time.
Sure. Thank you. Questions for the applicant, Ms. Ketchum?
No, thanks.
Ms. Gupta?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson?
I have no questions, but I do have a comment that I think I like your design and the wraparound effect with the stone. I always believe a building should have four sides, and you, you did very well with it. And I just appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you. I share that belief as well.
Thank you. Mr. Seranakun, any questions?
No question for me.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to second the comment of Mr. Hanson. I think you, you've done a pretty good job on, on how you presented your design. Okay, with that, let's open it for public participation on this item. Janet?
Thank you, Chair. We're now opening public comment for item number four. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. So let's give it a second. I don't see anybody with their hand raised at the moment. There are no hands raised, too.
Okay, seeing that there's no, no one that wants to participate from the public on this item, I'm going to close public participation at this time. And with that, any commissioner deliberation at this time? Mrs. Ketchum?
Oh, I like the house, and I also I'm supporter of dark skies, and I think that I just wanted to point, as it relates to crime, I think the, the ring cameras, they, they work on infrared. I don't think they need exterior lighting on the house, but we hear from people in the community all the time. They want dark skies. I haven't heard anybody complaining about, oh, it's too much crime. We need more lighting. I, I don't hear that at all in this, in this neighborhood. So I support the project.
All right, Ms. Gupta?
It looks like a very nice design. I think it fits very well in the neighborhood. The neighborhood I live in, crime is there. And we keep it lighted. But, but that's, that's my thinking. Safety is important to me, but yes, we don't like to see it lighted all the time either. Okay, but the, that's my thinking, but it's a beautiful design. So I'm in support of the project. Thank you.
Mr. Hanson?
I'm in support of this and will vote positively.
Yeah. Mr. Seranakun? Any comments? All right. Yeah. Just wanted to mention, one of the things I appreciate about your project also is that, you know, you work with a small lot, and you fit everything within our regulations into it without it, without having to ask any, anything, you know, out of that envelope. So I really appreciate that, that you did the effort to just put it all in there. So with that, I'm very much in support. Thank you. So any motion for this?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Gupta.
Where do we have that? Okay, I have the recommendation here. I recommend that the Planning Commission approve the coastal development permit and design review permit, county file number PLN 2021-00445, by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in Attachment A.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Now we have a motion, a second. Janet, could you do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hanson?
Hi.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Chair Ramirez?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Yeah, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time today and all the, the nice comments about the project.
Sure, thank you.
Have a great day. Thanks.
All right, so we can now move to item number five. Janet, could you please read it for the record?
Sure. Item number five. Owner Simon Sin. Applicant Kurt Klein. File number PLN 2017-00369. Location 12660 Williams Ranch Road in North Skyline. And we have Summer, once again, for this presentation.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Summer Burleson, project planner with the San Mateo County Planning and Building Department. Yes, for anyone that just tuned in, I guess. Let me share my screen here. Is this visible?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Okay, so this item, item number five, is for a resource management permit and grading permit for a new single-family residence on a 1.47-acre parcel. The existing residence, which is about 2,484 square feet, a single-story, will be demolished to accommodate the new single-family residence proposed. The residence proposed is a two-story, single-family residence, as I mentioned, approximately 5,800 square feet in size. It will have an attached three-car garage and attached two-story pool cabana and, and a new swimming pool and ground swimming pool. A new septic system is proposed, use of the existing well is proposed, and some driveway improvements, particularly to meet fire access standards. Some four, five-gallon, 5,000-gallon water tanks are proposed, and some, and grading and tree removal, which I'll get into in more detail. The project site is located east of Highway 84. It's, the address is 12660 Williams Ranch Road, and what the county considers the North Skyline area. As I mentioned, it's a 1.476-acre parcel, and the zoning in that area and for the parcel is RM, which is Resource Management. And here's just another view of the project site. So Highway 84 is out here on the left side. Access to the property is actually off of 84 down, kind of towards the left side of your screen. Off of it comes, Old La Honda Road comes off of Highway 84 and kind of winds around here, if you can see my mouse, and then it, Williams Ranch Road cuts off of Old La Honda Road. And Williams Ranch Road comes around kind of the northeast side of the parcel, and then you access the driveway to the, the property site that way. So proposed is, as I mentioned, a two-story, single-family residence, approximately 5,800 square feet. The yellow dashed outline is the existing house that will be demolished to accommodate the new development, and attached three-car garage on kind of the left side of the house. A new in-ground pool at the rear with a pool cabana. And then some water storage tanks, four water storage tanks, kind of tucked into the front of the, the property here for fire suppression purposes. And as I mentioned, Old La Honda Road kind of sweeps around the parcel. And then Williams Ranch Road cuts off of it and scoops around the, kind of the other side of the parcel for access into the property. There will be some terraces, outdoor terraces around the new development, as well as fire access turnaround improvements, which is the gray area shown here, kind of the Y-L-shaped configuration at the front, and some additional, in addition to the three-car garage, some other uncovered onsite parking areas on both sides of the, the house, and then some landscaping kind of around the perimeter of the, the property, or the perimeter of the development, actually. So the first floor is approximately 2,700 square feet. That's living space, and then the garage is 759 square feet. That's the three-car garage. And the pool house, lower floor and upper floor total is about 791 square feet. And the first floor will accommodate the common living areas, you know, kitchen, dining, living, et cetera. And then the second floor is approximately 3,100 square feet in size, and it will have the, the residential bedrooms and sleeping areas. And here's some images of the elevations of the, the property. The upper left is the, would be the front elevation rendering. The lower is the rear. This kind of larger gray area here is the, the swimming pool at the rear. And the project has been designed to try to terrace some of the development. So that's kind of shown in this grading section YY illustration here. You've got the residence and the property, I should mention, slopes downward from Williams Ranch Road and the house site area as it, as it, as you head out, you know, to the rear of the property. So the house and then the pool kind of level kind of steps down, and then a lower terrace steps down a little further to try to align better with the topography of the site. And additional elevations, this is that three-car garage on the left-hand side, the right-hand side. It's essentially, you know, a very modern flat roof design. It is a two-story residence. Colors are shown on the right-hand side here, and as you can see, they're, you know, earth-toned colors to try to blend into the, the kind of rural area. In terms of grading, a grading permit is being sought for 800 cubic yards of cut and 600 cubic yards of fill. A majority of that is for the house and pool area. And then about 300 cubic yards total cut and fill is for driveway and site improvements. Some of those site improvements that are proposed includes a new detention system. Sort of based on this image, on the left-hand side rear here, you see a new underground detention system and swale. A new fire hydrant is required that will be located on site. I mentioned the four, 5,000-gallon water tanks that are required for fire suppression purposes. A new septic system will be located in the rear, this rear yard area here. And septic tank in, is near the house, and then the leach field is this kind of back rear area. There are two existing wells on the property. One of the wells is being required to be abandoned. That's up at the top of the screen here. And so that well will be abandoned per Environmental Health Services standards, and then reuse of the existing well located to the right side of the house. Down in the lower right corner of your screen here is proposed to serve the, the new residential development. And Environmental Health Services has reviewed the project, both for septic and well, and has provided conditional approval, including and has provided conditional approval, including that the existing well will be required to be pumped for testing prior to issuance of a building permit. Let's see. In terms of access, I mentioned the access before. In terms of access from Old La Honda Road and Williams Ranch Road that sweeps around, and just that the, there are fire turnaround improvements that will be made for the project. And the Fire District has reviewed the project and conditionally approved the project, both for fire access, fire emergency access, as well for fire suppression requirements for the, the project site, such as sprinklers, the hydrant that's required, and the water tanks. And let's see, the project does have a construction management plan proposed. And essentially during construction, there is accommodations will be made onsite for construction vehicle parking to be completely on the property. And as shown here, and there's ample room on the site for, you know, debris boxes and a construction trailer and so forth. So trees, this gets a little confusing, so I tried to code this out here to explain. So essentially, there are the RM district standards regulates trees starting at 55 inches in circumference, which is essentially 17 and a half inches in diameter, measured at four and a half feet above ground. So that threshold, trees that are greater than that size meet the threshold of being regulated and require a permit in the RM district for removal. And so of the trees, the total trees being proposed for removal, and there's actually eight regulated trees proposed for removal, six coast redwoods, I'm sorry, six coast live oaks, which I've tried to show, just so you get an idea, in the red. X's, one white spruce, which I think was mistaken as a white pine in the staff report, which is why there's eight trees shown here, and not the seven, as mentioned in the staff report. So one white spruce, which is in the development area, and one redwood tree. And then non-regulated tree removal, trees that don't need, require a permit from the county in order to remove in the Resource Management zoning district. For this project include two blue spruce trees, two coast live oaks, one redwood, and one American elm tree, and those are shown in the, the blue X's, and that means they are less than the 55-inch circumference, measured at four and a half feet above ground. And then the county also has a hazardous tree removal exemption that is county-wide for certain species and subject, subject to certain criteria to reduce fire hazard. And both Monterey pines and bay trees are both the limited species that can qualify under that hazardous exemption. And so there are two Monterey pine trees and one California bay tree shown in the orange X's that are proposed for removal, but meet the qualifications under hazardous exemption. So they actually do not need a permit in order to remove those trees. And so the county arborist had reviewed this project. The county arborist actually did a site visit at one point for this project site, and has noted that there are, there is a sudden oak death was observed in some of these coast redwood, or I'm sorry, coast live oak trees. And overall, the reasons for removal, in addition to, you know, poor health and condition, are to primarily accommodate development. If you recall, the stormwater drainage system was located over on this side. And so these trees would be removed for that purpose. The trees around the proposed residential development that you see here, and for the fire tanks and some fire supply water lines up in the front area are the, the main purposes for the removal of the trees that you're seeing here. And so the county arborist, as I mentioned, did review, he did a site visit, and ultimately has conditionally approved the tree removal proposal. A condition has been included in Attachment A of the staff report to require tree replacement at a one-to-one ratio. Any coast live oak trees, any regulated coast live oak trees that are removed need to be replaced with California native oak species. And there is a condition that requires that the tree replanting, while we don't see it here on these plans, the tree replantings will need to be accounted for and shown on the building permit plans for review under a building permit application. The staff has reviewed the project relative to the applicable general plan policies, and specifically vegetative water, fish, and wildlife resources, soil resources, historical and archaeological resources, rural land use policies, water supply and wastewater supply policies, and natural hazards, including geotech and fire. And I'll just mention relative to these policies related to geotech and fire, as I mentioned, fire has reviewed and conditionally approved the project for fire emergency access and fire suppression requirements for the project site. Also, there was a full geotechnical report prepared for the project that has been reviewed by the county's geotechnical section, and the county's geotechnical section has provided conditional approval of the, the project. And subject to the, the recommendations of the geotechnical report that will need to be demonstrated at the building permit stage. The project's been reviewed against the Resource Management Development Standards for sub-backs height and covered parking, and complies with those standards, as shown in this table one here. And also the RM development criteria for environmental quality, site design, utilities, water resources, cultural resources, and hazards to public safety. And as detailed in the discussion in the staff report, complies with each criteria. The project, I should mention, the project does have a condition with regards to noise, the project for construction noise. The project does need to comply, as all projects would, with the county's noise ordinance. And there's a condition of approval in Attachment A of the staff report that specifies the hours and days of construction can occur. The project is seeking a grading permit, and so the findings for a grading permit or that the granting of the permit will not have a significant adverse effect on the environment, that the project conforms to the criteria of the grading ordinance, including the standards referenced in Section 9296, which is related to fire safety. And the project is consistent with the general plan. And so the, as I mentioned, the geotechnical section and the drainage review section for the county have both reviewed and conditionally approved the project related to grading erosion control. And the, there are conditions in Attachment A of the staff report to ensure the project conforms to fire safety standards during construction and grading operations. And the project is consistent with the general plan, as discussed in details in the staff report. The staff prepared an initial study and mitigated negative declaration for the project. The public comment period was May 4th to May 23rd of this year, and no comments were received during that comment period. All of the mitigation measures have been included as conditions of approval in Attachment A of the staff report. And so staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the mitigated negative declaration that's included as attachment to the staff report, and approve the Resource Management permit and grading permit, county file number PLN 2017-00369, by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval and Attachment A of the staff report. And that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burleson. Great presentation, as always. Let's see, questions for commissioners? I'll start again with, from Mr. Ketchum.
Well, thank you. I've got a bunch of questions. Let's start with number of bedrooms. So Environmental Health had asked for clarification whether there were four, five, or six bedrooms, and that the the septic system is designed for four bedrooms. So was that, has that question been resolved? Basically, part of this is, what is the nanny's room? It seems to imply a live-in nanny, but it has no bathroom or closet. I'm assuming there's actually five bedrooms, because they weren't counting the one in the pool house.
Yeah, so first, the nanny's room, so the county and environmental health defers to, to this as well, and for counting, for qualifying as a bedroom, it needs to have a closet, or there's certain specific criteria for a certain amount of indentation of a wall that could create a closet. And so the nanny's room, and I don't know exactly the, the use of it. I would need to defer that to the applicant, if they will have a live-in nanny or not. But the actual use of that room is not, does not qualify as a bedroom. So there are four bedrooms currently in the, the main house. And then one bedroom in the in the pool house, because it does look like there's a closet in that room, in the pool house. So I think that they will, and and as you mentioned, that is correct. The condition is that four bedrooms is the maximum that they can have. So I think they may need to eliminate a closet, perhaps in the pool house room.
So they're not going, they're not going to be redesigning the septic. They're gonna make sure that there's only four bedrooms. And that doesn't relate to the number of bathrooms at all. It's just a matter of closets?
It doesn't, yeah, septic system does not relate to the number of bathrooms. It relates to the number of bedrooms. And I believe that they will reduce it down. I would defer to the applicant if they have any further in, with their current intent is on that.
Okay, on water supply. So we've got a minimum of three gallons per minute needed for the house and the ADU. So that the NACDEC discussion talks about that the project involves an upgrade of an existing private well. Is the well not currently adequate? What, why did? Well, let me finish this whole paragraph here. So, Condition 28 says, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall demonstrate appropriate potable domestic water supply." So shouldn't this testing be done before we approve this NACDEC and project? The, because if it isn't, then they have to think about another location for well. That opens up a whole other bunch of concerns. And a final question about water is, is, is the existing well at the west corner that's to be destroyed? Why are there two wells? Did one fail? Do we have any more information on that?
With regards to the requirement for the pump testing, like I said, environmental health only requires the pump testing be done prior to issuance of the building permit. It's a, I think, sort of a, you know, at risk to the applicant that that should they not find water and need to find an alternative well location that could affect their, what's, you know, an approval, a planning permit approval of the site. They may require needing to go back through redesign and go, go back through planning permit, either for an amendment or a new permit. I don't know the, what the use has been, or why there are two wells on the property. I would need to defer that to, to the applicant, if he has any further information on that.
Okay, about lighting, that, that the, clearly that, well, there's no lighting plan. Although we do see these uplights under the Palo Verde trees. And, and the other hint we get is the fixtures that they show that appear to be like to light up the exterior facade of the building or something like that. So I'm just concerned about, I mean, it would seem like the, the approach there was not considering dark skies at all. So I just feel uneasy about ignoring this whole plan, letting that all happen after we we do this. Has there been any conversation with the applicant about this conflict of approach here?
Well, I do know, so staff has included a, a condition of approval that will need to be complied with related to exterior lighting, and that it does need to, all of the exterior light fixtures will need to be checked at the building permit stage. But do need to meet a dark sky compliant rating. So that is something that will be checked at the building permit stage. And then staff would need to ensure, prior to building final, that those, that the approved lighting that meet that condition are the ones that have been installed around the, the property.
The, well, the thing is, even if the individual fixtures are rated dark sky compliant, without a plan, we have no idea how many of these fixtures are, and some cumulative amount of, I mean, could, it could affect dark night skies in this rural area. I just particularly concerned because several, particularly the fire, the fire station in El Granada that was approved without the lighting plan, and then during the building permit stage. Anyway, the final result was considered objection, objectionable to the surrounding neighborhood. So I just, it seemed my takeaway from that was, you know, you really need a lighting plan before you, that, that's my concern. And I have other questions about the drainage and slope stability, but let me give other people a turn here.
Thank you, Ms. Ketchum. Gupta?
Yeah, I too have several kind of disjointed questions here. Let me start with, is this parcel or location considered in scenic corridor?
Yes, it is.
It is. So after all these trees are removed, and this home is built as proposed, is it going to be visible from the street?
Staff does not believe that it would be visible from the street, just due to the location of the nearest public roadways and the topography change between the roadways and the development site.
Because we see all the, the trees that are going to be removed are marked. But we don't have a visual idea of what, what we'll see, what trees remain, and what we'll see from the street. Because the home, to me, doesn't, or the residence Doesn't seem to be fitting with. I can't imagine other uh, residences in the neighborhood are built similar. Outwardly looks. Th- this is, this is my take on it.
Yeah, the, the trees proposed removal are located, um. From a um, kind of compass, um, uh. Take it's along the south side and the east side of the, the property. Um, La Honda Road and Old La Honda Road are located on the, um, more on the west side of the, the property. Or west of the property. Um, which is more the side where, um, there exists an open area where the septic system. Um, if you remember that rear, what was considered the rear yard, um, that where the septic system is proposed, um, that's. Uh, more the direction of the old La Honda Road and La Honda Road side. That's already kind of barren.
Okay, um, and it. The, I don't clearly remember, but is there? Any kind of fencing on the outside of this property?
I don't believe there is fencing along the perimeters of the property. Um, of the property itself, um, or any fencing that's proposed. Um, along the perimeters of the property. There's some retaining walls certainly, um, within the, you know, the proposed development area.
Uh, that would be more on the inside.
Correct.
Right, in, inside, yeah. Okay. And, and is it typical to replace uh, the trees that are going to be removed? Uh, with this fifteen gallon size, um. It, am I reading that correct? Is that fifteen gallon trees?
Yes, the condition.
Replacement, yeah.
Yes, that is correct for the condition. It is a one-to-one replacement of the regulated trees at a fifteen gallon size and that is. And that's the, uh, our, our standard replacement sizing. Um, we, I did. Um, review that with our county arborist as well regarding sizing and, um, that was. He found that to be satisfactory.
Okay, and that would be for, for all eighteen trees or only the significant trees?
It's the, um, only the significant regulated trees, which are the nine trees, um. That require a permit to remove, um, require a replacement. The, the remaining trees. Um, are not regulated by the county, um, and do not require any sort of permit to remove. And therefore, no replacement requirement is put upon them.
Okay, so that is left up to the applicant or the owner. Uh, to however they want to.
If they wish to.
Replace them, yeah.
Replace, yeah, add additional plantings.
Okay. Okay, and. And the, oh, one of the. Neighbors in their correspondence had measured some mudslides. Some slides that took place in, I, I believe ninety-seven, nine, nineteen ninety-eight. Um, are, are those stable, stable now at this time and. Taken into account, uh, in whatever, um. Grading and things that would, would be done.
Um, I, I do not know, uh, the answer to that at this time. I am, um. I have seen the photos. I am not sure exactly where relative, you know, to the. Maybe a site plan, um, those locations are located, um, but it is something that, um. Staff would pass over to our, um, drainage and geotechnical sections to be able to. Provide some further, um, review or consideration. Um, especially at the, you know, when they're reviewing the project at the, at a building permit stage.
And one, um. One other question that I had was about these four. Five thousand gallon of water tanks. How, how are those used for fire protection?
Oh, it's a, they're, um, intended to store water. So I think the. Coasts, the fire district had calculated, um. I think of somewhere between eighteen and nineteen thousand gallons of water. Um, for fire suppression, um, water storage would be needed for the project site and their proposal is the four. Um, five thousand gallon water tanks, but the water is, um, essentially stored in those tanks. Um, to be, you know, ready and available for, for use. Um, if a hazardous situation comes, comes up.
Uh, this, this is hazardous situation after it's, the home is built. Is that correct?
Oh, yes, sorry. Yes, that, that would be, those are permanent, um, water tanks. Yes.
Right, right. And, and they, they are filled at all times. They have water in them at all times to be used. Okay, and I had one more question, okay. So I, I had a little, um, concern about the, um. The, the order in which we are going about this, um. Processes, uh, especially about the water well that Commissioner Ketchum also mentioned. Is right now, the present, uh, structure that we have on this parcel. Is, I, I'm assuming it's a smaller parcel, smaller, uh, structure with fewer bedrooms and fewer. Uh, people living in there and, and lower consumption of water. Right? And now that we have four bedroom, five bedroom, whatever size home, which will need more water. And whether the, uh, new. Or the updated well will be able to provide that or not. But that should be done beforehand before we move ahead and remove these eighteen trees from there. Is, is there a? Plan in place that, what should happen first?
Well, the, yes, well, the, um, environmental health services requires that the pump test be done. Prior to issuance of a building permit and that's part of their review at the building permit stage. Um, the tree removal can never occur prior to issuance of a building permit though. So, um, there, um, we shouldn't see us run into a situation where, you know, true removal has occurred. Prior to an applicant securing all of the kind of quote-unquote final approvals on a building permit. Um, for issuance to start construction.
Okay. Okay, thank you, thank you. That's all I have in this time.
Call on Commissioner Hanson.
Yeah, Commissioner Ketchum actually asked most of the questions I was gonna ask and I, just to. Follow up on the concern, the nanny room made me also think of. Um, all access to bathrooms. When I looked at the plan was through somebody's bedroom. You know, and if the bedrooms doors were closed, like maybe locked, you know, how does someone else like. A nanny's room or just a guest right now use a bathroom? Then that was another question that came up. Um, and I'll, I'll, I'll let the architect or somebody help, help me through this thought process. Uh, the only other thing, um, do we have a picture of the existing, uh, house there?
Uh, I do not. I'm not sure if the applicant might.
I guess, I'm gonna get a site visit. I wanted to be sure that I, what I was looking at. Is right, and you know, if I had an actual building, I'd say, okay, I did nail it. And that was just a question. All right, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Ryan O'Quinn.
No questions on my end.
Okay, um, I think I, I did have a, a few questions, but at this point, you know, uh, everything I think has been covered by. Um, the previous questions from the commissioner, so I don't wanna be redundant, redundant on that. So with that. Um, the applicant, uh, or owner, do they have a presentation or perhaps they can address? Uh, some of our questions. I, I'd see Mrs. Ketchum has a hands raised. Go, go ahead, Miss Ketchum.
Well, I did have other questions on the drainage and slope stability, but perhaps it'd be better to wait after the applicant anyway, and then either one could answer.
Correct, yeah. Why don't we let the applicant, um, come in at this time?
Hi, I'm Kurt Klein with Modern House Architects. Uh, maybe I can answer a few questions. Summer's presentation again was. Better than I could too. Uh, very descriptive of the project. I could speak a little bit to sort of the owner's desires. In building program and aesthetic. Um, uh, the front of the house has very limited glass on it, um, for, for reasons of just light privacy from Williams Ranch Road. But also to, um, tie in to some of the aesthetic. Um, that they were looking for from, um, um, their childhood. And, uh, of course, the rear of the house is view facing, so, uh, that's where primarily the glass resides. Um, on the trees issue, yeah, the owners. Have no desire to take down any trees that aren't required to be taken down and as. You go through sort of current standards and current codes, um, the development, uh, keeps, uh, ever growing. Um, from retention areas to, you know, water tank areas and things of that nature. So. Um, if, if there were methods of saving some of those trees, we would gladly save them. Uh, in regards to night sky, uh, totally agree with you on night sky standards and, um, gladly would. Um, provide a revised lighting plan, uh, to address those for the commissioners. Uh, as far as the building program and, and rooms arrangement, um, my understanding is the nanny is a daytime, uh, caretaker. While, uh, one of the owners is at work, uh, not a live-in nanny at all. And really just a space for her to be by herself if she's not taking care of the, the children. Um, the code, uh, or the pro, buildings program was just directly related to their growing family needs. And, and what they, what they wanted. Um, I guess that's all I've got to say about it. Um, I can answer anybody's other particular questions about, you know. That they might have.
Yeah, Miss Ketchum, I think you have some questions, sir.
So, um. The, when the pool requires draining, where, where does the water go?
That's a good question. I'd have to, I'd get back to you on the technical aspects of that because I. I, I don't know as if we have, have gotten that far yet, you know, and being in the planning stages, we haven't gotten into the, the construction drawings yet.
The, um. Wouldn't the stormwater detention on-site not add to the risk of landslide?
Well, we've had that analyzed by both Morris engineers and the civil engineers working on the job and, and. Neither one of those presented a concern in that. And they're very robust systems that are being asked to be put in, so, um, we're, we're thinking that, that there is an additional risk there.
So are these just to hold the water and release it slowly later or is the intent to?
Yeah, it's for runoff to be released at a, at a much slower rate through a system below ground.
The, um, I noticed that the. Well, first of all, the photos from the down slope neighbor indicated, uh, existing runoff is already causing erosion and slope failure. On their property or near them and the, the drainage in, infrastructure appears inadequate and deteriorated. So how does this fit into, I mean, who's responsible for that? I mean, if it. Um. I would assume the culverts under the road, maybe the county had some responsibility under there, but, but if nobody's taking care of it and we're looking at. Climate change with the, um. Well, particularly this, there was this qualifier in the geotechnical, the slope stability. They said, under current climatic conditions, it's gonna be okay. Don't we need to consider climate change and the rapidly increasing risk of superstorms? Um, well, the detention systems, it seems like they won't work. And I mean, I'd be worried if I was a downhill neighbor.
I guess my answer to that was there's, there's been, you know, standards set up for the design work of these systems. And until that gets modified, the engineers have to design to that standard. Um, otherwise, it's just an ever-expanding necessity that engineers need qualifiers for, I guess, is what I'd say. So it, it does meet the current standards that are in place for, um, runoff and, and detention.
Which are under current climatic conditions.
Right.
And I didn't, uh, I didn't get a good understanding of the drainage plan, um. Is that just how the water will, um. Leave your property without eroding your property. So then, then it will, uh, with this increased, um. Impermeous, impermeable area, uh, head towards the plugged culvert and the whatever the issues are that, that's already occurring. Um, down slope, uh, but when, when will this be addressed? I mean, um, uh, maybe this is the question for Steve or something. I don't know. It just, it just looks like. A problem that's being ignored.
If I could just add, um, one note, and I am in no way, uh, you know, have the technical. Um, knowledge of a civil engineer here, but, um, I, I do know, you know, every project is held, um. And this is under the purview of our drainage section, but held to the county's, um, drainage policies. Which requires that, um, post-construction, um, flows off the prop, off of a property site. Do not exceed pre-development flows. So that is all taken into account in terms of your proposed project and. Regardless of how much impervious surface you're adding to a project, to a property, um, versus pre-project, um. Flows and impervious surface, um, it, it needs to be equivalent at the end of the day, um, after the project is proposed. And so. Um, then, um, you've got to design your stormwater system to accommodate any increased flow. That would be generated from increased impervious surfaces on the property. Um, and generally speaking. Um, the, um. Some of those standards includes accounting for, um, runoff from a, a ten-year, um, one-hour design. Um, storm criteria and then also, um, and that the water can, um, either infiltrate. Um, or, um, and, or meter out, um, over a, a period of time. Um, but it also accounts for, that review also accounts for, um, larger, um, than ten-year storms. Um, considerations as well as if there are back-to-back, larger back-to-back storms, um, that there's. Um, safe overflow mechanisms, um, for a property and a project. And so those are all considerations that are taken into account when our drainage reviewer is, is reviewing, um, any project.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Miss Scoopda, any additional questions?
Um, yes, I do. Let's see, where should I start? Uh, Commissioner Hanson had brought up, uh. I would like to see, uh, if you have, um. Kind of a, a drawing of the existing structure on the property.
We don't have an existing drawing, but we could probably dig up some existing photographs. I could describe the existing house is a ranch house with two feet overhang, so it's a very typical looking late 50s, early 60s ranch house.
Okay, and like, if you could just describe, like, how many bedrooms?
Don't recall how many bedrooms it has. I have to find that out for you. I don't remember. Okay, we started this project like five years ago.
Okay, okay. All right, let's keep that alone then.
Yeah.
I actually have that information, if you can give me a few moments to pull that up. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move on, move to my next question. So is this? I don't know if you are that far along on your home design, but earlier I had asked of Ms. Burdison about this being in the scenic corridor. To me, this doesn't appear to be as part of a rural character of the home from outward from the visual looks of it. Did you ever consider that? At least the one drawing that I see in our report here, it didn't appear that. So was that ever a consideration? Or?
I'm sorry, yeah, material usage definitely was, to use sort of a darker brown, putty-colored exterior as the primary finish, that was definitely concerned. The colors of all the doors and window frames are dark gray. The metal trellis work that's in front is also dark gray. And so, yeah, the material usage was, as far as the aesthetic of the structure, it was always intended to be a modernist house. And, and the advantage of that, of course, is it kept the profile of the building profile lower than what a pitched roof house would have with that type of building program attached to it. And it was recalling some styling that, again, the owners liked from when they were younger.
Okay. And it, of course, would meet all energy efficiency, solar installations, and all-electric.
Yeah, the advantage of, of course, new construction for any house is that the efficiencies dramatically change every year. You know, lighting is much more efficient. The use of solar is almost necessity. Window and door design has gotten very efficient. The companies that we're looking at are California-based companies, and they're both extremely energy-efficient products. So the house will be extremely efficient in that way.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Hanson, next. No, okay, Commissioner. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wish there was a picture of the house, so I'd make sure I was looking at the right area.
I'm sorry, didn't we have the other person saying that she had something?
Yes. Hi, good morning. My name is Nat Simi. You know, I work for Kurt Klein. I'm on House Architects. I did pull up the information from the existing home. It's a it currently has, it's a three-bedroom, sorry, four-bedroom home with two baths. And separate from that, there is a dining, kitchen, living, a family room, and a quite a large storage area. And the parking, it will be under, is under a carport, exterior carport. So there's no garage.
Is that carport seriously deteriorating?
He, the last time, yes, it's not in the greatest condition.
Okay, then I saw the right area.
You know what you're, okay, you see it, okay. Yeah, so that, yes, that's all I had to present.
Okay, I just want to make sure I got everything lined up in my head.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Mr. Sirhan Alquon.
I have no questions or comments.
All right.
One more question, please.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead, Miss Ketchum, yeah.
Back to the drainage. So I noticed, oh, see, the neighbor, the downhill neighbor was speaking about drainage that was coming from the area where the current well is. And the, as I understand it, your site drainage is at the other end of the parcel. So is that going to alleviate some of the drainage that's coming from the water tank area and going directly downhill? Would that be diverted down to the new location or, or not? Or is it just roof runoff?
It's side and roof runoff. And yeah, that was the recommendation and location from the civil and soils engineers that we had looking at the project. That was the location that they thought would be best.
So perhaps this is taking all the roof runoff, so perhaps this would reduce the runoff that's coming from the water tank area? I mean, not the firewater tanks, but the well water tanks.
Yeah, current design, of course, has all of these methods that reduce speed and volume of water, and that's the intent. And right now, there isn't any really control systems on site. It's just free to run. Runs off, so new systems are definitely better than what's there now.
Perhaps when, if the neighbors are here today, we hear from them, they could help pinpoint how something some improvement on flow at the water tank area might help out the problem they had pointed out. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that it all, Mrs. Ketchum? I think it is, okay. So, yeah, from hearing everybody, everybody's opinion or questions on this, I would probably, one of my concerns is definitely the the well as to when, you know, the well is going to be checked to see if it meets the requirements. Because normally, I think in the past, we've, we've always, in situations like this, they always bring the wells first to, you know, make sure that there is water. Everything gets analyzed, and then they move on with the application for a residence afterwards. So I think that we have some concerns about that.
Chair Ramirez, I can just address that. You know, I think it depends on the status of the current water supply. So certainly, if you have a vacant property that doesn't have an established domestic well, it's essential. But where you have an existing residence, where there's a history of having available water, unless, you know, there's some indication that there's, that lies at risk. It is fairly standard for us to, you know, require this final confirmation by environmental health at the building permit stage. And I think clearly the applicants invested a lot of time and effort into this. I'm sure they've considered the reliability of the water supply in making that investment. So I don't know if there's more to be said about that. But I just wanted to point out that it's consistent with our typical process.
Sure, and I understand that, you know, that there's an existing house and it's been supplied with water. But I think that, I know from my perspective, that there's going to be an increase in the requirement of the water usage. So the, it would have been, you know, good to know what the the actual status of those wells is, looking forward. And even for me, it's like what, as we know, that a lot of these wells are now failing because of the drought situation that we have, that well will be their alternative for them to, in case into the future, these things fail, what's going to be a remedy for that. Anyway, one more thing was that the dark skies and perhaps you can tell me, I mean, can we add a condition to make sure that we we put something on writing about requiring dark skies lighting for this house?
Yes, absolutely. In fact, I believe the condition's already there. Am I correct, Summer?
That's correct.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Condition number one, I'm sorry. Mitigation measure condition number one, page 19.
Okay, all right, if it's there, okay, great. Okay, I don't have any additional questions. So I think now we can open for public participation.
Thank you, Chair. I do have two hands raised for this item. I will first call on Claudette. Claudette, just accept his invitation and unmute your mic, and you may begin speaking. Just one second.
Hello? Hello? Yes.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
My, my first comment was, I live on Old La Honda Road. And I don't know where this meeting was posted, but I was unaware of it, as were two of my neighbors, until yesterday. And I am very dismayed, because everybody has a thought one way or another about this project, and we really haven't had time to comment on it. And I understand it was posted sometime a while ago, and I think somebody said the Samhain Times, which I didn't even know existed. Anyway, so I have a lot of opinions about what you've been bringing up, and I appreciate the issues that you're bringing up, because I think they all need to be considered. I'm specifically concerned about the trees and the drainage. And the wells here are drying up. I know, I'm living with it. And so I would like the planning commission to consider that when you cut down a 50-foot tree and you replace it with a two-foot tree, it's not the same thing. This is the scenic corridor. And water is the hugest concern. Whether we have an extreme amount and washes out the road like it did a couple of years ago, and it took the county a year to replace the road on Old La Honda Road, or the part of Old La Honda Road that's crumbling now, or whether we have no water and the wells run dry. I think these are huge issues before a project this size is even considered. So I would like to have the opportunity for the neighbors to comment on this. And I don't know how we do that, given that today's the day.
Is that all your comment that you have at this moment?
Right, no, but yes, because my comment is, the timing is that we weren't notified.
Okay. Well, I would say that if, you know, if we do get to approve it, it will be, it could be appealed to the board of supervisors, so there would be another opportunity for you to comment. But if, you know, I don't know where this is going to end today, but anyway, thank you for your, for your comment at this point. Janet, who else do we have?
Thank you, Chair. We now have Jonathan Bussler.
Janet, I can hardly hear you.
You can't hear me? Hold on, hold on a second. How about now? No?
Is it only me, or is it everyone else?
It's a little on the faint side, Janet.
I'm sorry, I don't know, something's happening with my computer. Give me just a second, let me.
I think you're loud enough for us to proceed.
Okay, go ahead, Janet. Bring the next person in, please.
Okay, we now have Jonathan Bussler. Hold on just a second. Will I start your timer? Go ahead.
Okay, fantastic. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Fantastic. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, and it's nice to see Mr. Sen on the call as well. We are the downhill neighbor, so I wanted to address the questions that Commissioner Ketchum had about drainage. So the drainage plan that, as it's submitted in the documents, I think it's page 37 through 38, talk about drainage from the home, the new residence. But there is no drainage plan that has been submitted for the north side of the parcel. So if you were to look at the parcel, there's quite a steep gradient from the driveway area down to the existing well, and all that drains down onto our property. And I did submit the photos of the current erosion that has happened on our property that, you know, goes past our propane tank, our water tank, so critical infrastructure for our house. And then probably most concerning is that water, that stormwater drains below our wastewater drain field, our septic field. And there's been substantial erosion there. So any additional water flow towards our property would make that situation worse. And, you know, if we lose our, if we lose our leach field, you know, that's catastrophic for the livability of our home. So I would like to see a drainage plan for the north side of the property, because the plans do call for improvements in the driveway area, you know, fire truck turnaround. And if the Williams Ranch access were to be paved, that would increase the impervious surface area, which would cause more drainage, more stormwater runoff towards our property. So the plans as submitted have drainage for the existing home, or sorry, for the new residents draining away from our property, but they have no drainage plan for the smaller portion, the north side of the parcel, that does drain currently towards our property and would be runoff would be increased, if this project goes forward. And then addressing some of Commissioner Gupta's questions, well, the first question I had was what has been the determination for the front of the property? Because we know that a private road, Williams Access Road cannot be the front of the property. So the front of the property, for setback purposes, has to be a public road. So that's Old La Honda Road. And I think there was some discrepancy there in terms of discussion about what is the front versus the rear. And so I have not seen any determination in the plans of what the front of the property is. On the, then I started going back to Commissioner Gupta's questions about the trees. The, the current tree plan does not list two additional trees that are in the vicinity of of tree number three that are between the residents, the existing residents, and Old La Honda Road, which is the scenic corridor. Maybe those are on, on county property, I'm not sure, but regardless, they're mature trees that are not on the existing plan. So we would like to see a tree protection plan in place for those trees. And then, you know, the removal of trees that are between the existing residents and Old La Honda Road. Old La Honda Road really curves around the entire west side of this property. So there's, there's significant trees, 40-foot trees that when they're removed, the new residents will be visible from the scenic corridor. So I think that that wasn't completely taken into consideration, because, you know, for the most part, it's not visible from the corridor now, but that's because there's four you know, 20 to 45-foot tall trees there. And if you replace those with a 15-gallon tree, it's not going to be, it will be visible. And then, you know, there is no plan showing where those 15-gallon trees will go, because as I see the plans as they're submitted now, they, there's no place to put them. Every square foot of the parcel has been taken up by septic stormwater drainage, new square footage, et cetera. So where there's no place for those new trees to go. I'm glad to hear that the commissioners share our thoughts about light pollution, and I would hope that the, the plans will be revised for, for that, those considerations. And then finally, the well. I, I agree with Commissioner Ketchum and some of the other comments, Chair Ramirez, that we're putting the cart before the horse here. I mean, figuring out, assuring that you have water is the first step. I can tell you that we don't have enough water for a project. Um, I can tell you that we don't have enough water for a project like this on our property, and we're adjacent. And some of my neighbors have already had water deliveries this year. So, um, and the property's been vacant for the last six years, so the water use, uh, once it's actually lived in will be different. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet, do we have any more?
Yes, uh, we have two more. Fran Pollard followed by Lenny Roberts.
Okay, thank you.
Pollard. Ford, can you hear us?
Mister Paul, uh, Fran, Fran Pollard, could you hear us? And can you unmute yourself?
Hi, I'm sorry, I I didn't mean to comment. I I don't think my hand is raised.
Oh. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Now I'll call on Lenny Roberts.
Go go ahead, Mrs. Roberts, unmute yourself.
There we go. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I thought I had unmuted myself. Okay, um, I'm Lenny Roberts. Just for the record, I am the legislative advocate for Green Foothills. Um, unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to review the staff report, but I was listening to the presentations and the commissioners' questions. And I share the concerns that the commissioners have raised, particularly with respect to demonstration of water availability and septic capability and the stormwater runoff issues. Prior to approval of this permit, it it just, it it is backwards to assume that um, once the planning commission has approved something that um, the, you know, to to defer those issues until the building permit stage, and I've commented about this before. I would also just like to, if the the neighbor Jonathan Boozer has more comments, if I could share the remainder of my time with him, if he has any additional comments, I would like to do that. Um, so thanks very much for considering my comments.
Okay, thank you, Miss, Miss Roberts. Janet, do we have any additional speakers?
That's all I had for now.
I would note, Chair, that the owner would like to speak, Mr. Sin.
Okay, um, all right, I I think, yeah, we'll bring him in, but I I think at this time, since we don't have any more speakers, I would like a motion to close our public participation for the item.
Isn't the owner considered a speaker?
Uh, yeah, hi, can you hear?
Um, I I think we normally treat him as us, you know, the applicant and or owner, so that he'll have the time to do that. Um. So, can can I just have a motion at this time to close public participation?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Although some favor, or Janet, go ahead and do the roll call, please.
Now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Commissioner Ketchum.
Hi.
Commissioner Gupta.
Hi.
Commissioner Handsome.
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Hi.
Commissioner Saranokuan.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So public participation is now closed. The the motion carries unanimously. Um, all right, so we can bring in the the owner at this time, please.
Yes, hi, um, can you guys hear hear me?
Yes, we can hear you and see.
Perfect, perfect. Hello, good morning, Commissioner. My name is Simon Sin. I'm the owner of the property. And thank you so much for your time this morning, uh, to address all your concerns, um, including my neighbor's concern. Um, and I listen, I listen to most of your um comments, and there are a couple of things I I do want to um uh to answer, maybe give you a better idea. Um, going back to um first question, uh, regarding the um the assisting house, there are four bedrooms uh in there. I had that was answered. And but I think I want to address about the nanny situation. You you know, we applied this, um we submitted this application back in two thousand seventeen. Um, and we didn't really know the length, uh, or maybe it'll be a year, and then we're planning on having babies. So I have two kids. One is now five and a half, and the other one is two and a half. And you know, when we submitted this application, we're hoping that to have the nanny to take care of the kids, to help out. But, you know, after the pandemic, I'm doing everything myself. I take care of the kids, I send them to school. So, you know, having a live-in or come during daytime nanny is even not something that we are planning at this point. So I want to highlight this. Um. We have been in this property, we've been living at this house since May first, two thousand one. So we own this property, it's my husband and I, we owned this house since then. We lived there for many, many, many years. Um, you know, now it's two thousand twenty-two. It's already over twenty years. Yes, the house has been vacant for the past couple of years, because I have two new kids. And we felt like the house condition is just not great for two newborns. So that's why we have not been living there. Um, but, you know, this house, when we purchased this house in year two thousand, it's like a love at the first sight. It's some, it's a place that we want to live there and to start a family there. And now I have this two kids, and, you know, I want to create a place where they could move in, grow up in, and in such a beautiful area. All these years, we have actually experienced a lot of issues that actually been been talked about. From water, um, yeah, we, all these years, all these twenty-two years, I only poured in two, two times for the water to fill up the tank. And uh, and that's all the experience I have, but we have flooding issues. You know, with the assisting house, whenever there were like raining, heavy rains like we had a couple of years ago. Um. It was pretty bad. Even our house was flooded in the storage room. And my husband and I would have to like help out and get rid of the water. It it was a lot of work. So right now, we don't even have the water planning. It it's just not great. It's just not even there. So hoping that with this new house, with the new plan, it will help eliminate all these issues. And also, we have power outage and the fire and the noise, all these things. We are all complying with um what's required um by the county, um, by the rules. Um, so one of the things that I want to stress is that when Kurt helped us to design the house, there were many things had been considered, and we asked Kurt to incorporate into the plan, so that, um, you know, everything will be considered. Um, as for the trees, by no means, I want to tell you guys, everyone, we don't want the trees to be taken out. We want the trees, we want that privacy, we want to have every single oak tree there. That forty-foot oak tree, I don't want to take out. We love this house because of the oak tree in the neighborhood and in the area. So, um. I just want you to know that we don't want to take out any trees if we don't have to. But based on the report that we got, we were told to remove the dead trees or the trees that are sick. You know, we we are also as disappointed as some of the na- our neighbors, but, you know, I I I I suggested, you know, to, uh, you know, just talking uh back in the um meeting with the alborist, that, you know, maybe as we progress, we don't take out as many trees. So at least we still have that greenery or privacy. As for also the dark sky, um, yeah, we we don't need any light pollution, and that's something that I want to make sure, um. This is my position. I don't, it it is okay. Um, and fencing for Commissioner Gupta, um, that was one of your concern. Yes, we have no plans of having any fencing. Um. And let me see here, concern well, I want to address um the water well situation, and Commissioner Gupta mentioned it earlier. Why is there, why are there two well and one is abandoned? Actually, when we moved in, um, or when we bought the house from the Williams, um, at that time, Kurt Williams was the owner, his mom lived in the house. And, um. He actually disconnected that well, because that well fit into their house. That was what I was told. And then when we purchased the house, he said, okay, I will get you a new well, I will take care of it. And at the time, when we purchased the house, that land, it was part of the deal that he would take care of the other well for us. So that was the answer. I wouldn't know why it was abandoned, but I, you know, that's all I know, is he doesn't want us to use their water. That's, that was the whole reason. Um. Let's see. And I think, I think that's all I want to address, but I just wanted to thank you for your time. Thank you for listening to me. I, my my goal is really just, you know, we want to move back in, to have a place for my children. And, uh, you know, as a dad now, you know, I I just want to, you know, ask for you to consider it, um, to approve the project. And we will work with you, whatever, you know, you your recommendation, we'll we'll work on that and.
Thank you, Mr. Sin.
Um, yeah.
I think, and hang around, I think, in case there's more questions for you from commissioners. So, all right, thanks. Uh, with that, I'm gonna say, um, I'm gonna call on Mrs. Ketchum. Mrs. Ketchum, do you have any questions?
Uh, just questions at this point?
Uh, no, I think we're in deliberation also. Go go ahead.
Deliberation, well, um. I guess you have a sense of my concerns from all my questions. Basically, at this point, uh, thank you for the assurances on the dark sky and a number of bedrooms, but I still, um. I'm still not happy with the lack of well test and and a more comprehensive drainage plan. I I'm, at this point, I'm feeling like I would like to continue this item to get those two pieces.
Okay, um, is that all for now?
Yeah.
Okay, Miss, Miss Gupta?
Um. Thank you, um. Thank you, Mr. Sin, for the addressing some of the concerns, but yes, um. As is, I I think that we need more information uh on this, and we need to go about this, um this project in a more, um more systematic way in to my understanding. And some of the things that were brought up by Mr. Jonathan Boozer. Uh, we we need those information out there also, and, um. And and to me, the I I'm still not very clear on the visibility of of this home from the street. Uh, I thi- I think it's a scenic corridor, and it should, it should, uh. The the way the home is presented with all those trees removed, we are still going to see the things. Um, th- this home is not going to look very pretty from the street. Those are my concerns. Thank you.
Mister Hanson?
Okay. Um, first, I want to thank the owner for, uh, willing to address the issues of night skies and that. I really believe he is sincere about the trees and wanting the trees, and will do what it is to be taken. I unless I'm missing something, I I'm not highly concerned about the well. I am concerned that there's not enough water, but the project can't move forward unless there is water. So if we approve it or don't prove it, I mean, we don't you know, if 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 everything else meets it, and there's not enough water, the project just can't go whether we approve it or not, if I understand it right. So that doesn't rank that high, but I, you know, is there enough water, particularly for a pool and is many things like that? That's a question to be determined, and I think the risk is on the owner, uh, not necessarily on us to make sure that it is there. Um. My biggest concern, which is not all that the owner can uh solve it, is after traveling through it in there, that's still not a firewise community. There is the branches are too low to ground there, you know, it it is a fire hazard. Fire hazard today, you you could live in a fire hazard tomorrow, eat with or without that house there, new house there. Um. Um. Yeah, and dead trees have to come out, and those things have to be addressed and not know that. I looked at the design. Now, that's not a design I would choose, but it's really high-quality design. It is, it's a very impressive design. Um. I tried to travel on Old La Honda Road and along on the current new La Honda Road and on Williams Ranch Road. Uh, visibility from two of those roads are is, uh. I don't think it's gonna be an issue, particularly on Old La Honda Road, because A, you're worrying about the bicyclists, and B, you're worrying about the curves. Um, even when I was attempting to look up, I did not really see an issue. Um. And I was looking. Um, you know, with some Williams Road, Ranch Road is a private road, and I can't can't see any reason why you would be taking it unless you already live on that road. It's, uh, and they kind of make it, uh. They discourage people driving on that road. Let's let's call it that. Um. So, um, I I can't find any objections to to this thing, but I'm still listening. Um. And, you know, but those are my thoughts.
All right, um, Mister Saranokuan, your comments, sir?
Yeah, I have no comments or questions.
Okay, thanks. Um. I'm going to side a little more with Mister Hanson on this. Um. Although I do have a great concern about the water situation, particularly that wells are seem to be failing right now, but as long as, um I I am reass- reassured here that, you know, the project would not move forward if, once they do the the testing of the well, and there there's no water, then the project would be dead. It couldn't go any for, uh, any further. Um, that that does not limit us from being able to approve it today. Um. You know, and and I really appreciate also the owner coming on and telling us their family situation, because I think, you know, in my mind, um, having thinking about what they've gone through five years already, and I'm sure a lot, a lot of this had to do with COVID. Um. But I think five years is a huge amount of time to try to bring to a resolution, you know, for someone who wants to build a home. Um. The the other thoughts I have about the the drainage is that, obviously, there is significant, um deficiencies on the existing house and the drainage that I Deficiencies on the existing house and the drainage that I think if nothing else, this new project would actually. Uh, remedy and alleviate, um, a lot of that. So. That, those are my thoughts, so I think let's figure out how we move on this. Ms. Ketchum, go ahead.
Well, uh, yeah, I'm glad here, I was under, about the well test and, uh, so if it fails, so do they need a new, a permit to look for a new well? Is that the idea?
If, um, they, if the well fails and they need. Passing, yeah, then there would be, um. The permit requirement for the new well, let's see, are we in the coastal zone here, Summer?
No.
No?
No.
So I then, I.
Just for environmental health.
Right, only environmental health then would require a permit.
And my concern was if they say, oh, well, we got to dig a new well, let's dig one over here, and then that changes this and the other thing, and then, and it's totally out of the discretionary. Uh, phase at that point, that was my concern.
Well, let me say that if, um, uh, change in the water situation required a change in design, then that change in design would need to come back to the planning commission.
Okay.
It's Summer, it was what you were gonna say?
Yes, and that's correct, uh, the, there's a condition that any, any modifications to the project need to be. One, reviewed, you know, um, submitted to staff and reviewed, um, to determine if it's a minor change or if it. Is more significant design changes that would need to come back to the planning commission.
So, I guess the concern being that other than having to. Redesign the house for the new well, how the new well location might impact the neighbor's well. Um, you know, I, I guess it doesn't inspire confidence because the report says there's no. Evidence that this is going to impact anybody else as well, I don't know, as a layperson, I just find it hard to believe. But, um, anyway, that, that aside, um. The drainage issue still remains for me a problem. I just would like to see a more robust drainage plan, address, you know, focus, because the current situation looks. Um, in the neighborhood, it looks like a mess and, um, it looks neglected and deteriorated and, and just the pictures. Are worth a thousand words, so, um. At this point in our process, is there anything we can do to, um, get this addressed? Other than continuing this item and saying, please address this, I mean, I don't know. Is any, how does anybody else feel about this?
Commissioner Ketchum, I, I think that, um, you could expand upon the. Conditions, recommended conditions of approval to, um, acquire that, um, the drainage plan submitted with the building permit. Not only address the runoff directly from the new home, but, um, the runoff that's been identified as a problem on the, uh, north side of the property as well.
Can we capture what you just said?
Well, I, I think it's recorded and I think we can, we can go, if you are satisfied with, with your heard, I think. It has been recorded and it can be, uh, put into the record.
What Steve just said, I want that.
Yes. Yes.
I don't need to reiterate it in the motion or?
No, I, I don't think so, uh, correct, uh, can, can you?
Well, I, I think I could repeat it if needed, so.
Oh, good.
Because I, I think we, we are, that's the language that we're looking for, Steve, so that, uh, we can move forward, um. If, if you don't mind repeating.
Sure, not a problem, um, Summer, if you could help locate either a condition that we'd add to or kind of the general. Location where we'd want to insert it, so we can figure out, you know, what number it will be, it's not important that we identify that right now, but what we'll say is that. At the building permit stage, the drainage plan shall be supplemented to address, um, drainage issues on the north side of the property.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, so. I, I think if you, Ms. Ketchum, if you're satisfied with that, um. And anyone to make a motion based on what we just, um, talked about, so.
If Summer would put up, uh, the recommendation, I could read it.
I've got it here if you want, I'll just read it.
Go, go ahead, Ms. Ketchum.
I moved to adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve the resource management permit and grading permit, county file number PLN. Twenty seventeen zero zero three six nine by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval included in attachment of the staff report. And with the addition of. Drainage plan supplement to address the drainage issues on the north side of the property, how's that sound?
I, I think that's satisfactory, um, alright, is there second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, so now we have a motion in a second, um, Janet, please, uh, re, uh, do the roll call. Janet, oh.
Hi, can you hear me or no?
Yeah.
Sorry, Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Gupta?
Uh, nee.
Commissioner Hanson?
I.
Commissioner Serrano Quan?
I.
Here Ramirez?
I.
Motion passes.
Alright, the motion carries a four to one, uh, four in favor and one, one against, so congratulations, um. And, um, you know, um. Uh, you can move forward with your project. Thank you, um, alright, and we can continue.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, alright, uh, we have, uh, item number six, Janet, can you read it for the record?
Item number six on our applicant, uh, San Mateo County Offices Sustainability. A location unincorporated North Fair Oaks, this is an informational item on, on the North Fair Oaks Bicycle and Pedestrian Railroad Crossing. Uh, and Community Connection Study, and we actually have Joel Slavitt and also Shonda Singh online, um, from the Office of Sustainability, so go ahead, take it away.
Good morning, Commissioners, um, staff members of the public, we're really excited to be here today to give you an informational briefing on a study, um. The North Forks Bicycle and Pedestrian Railroad Crossing and Community Connection Study that we've been collaborating closely with the Office of Sustainability on. Um, and we have Joel Slavitt here, the Acting Program Manager for the Livable Communities, or Joel, you can reach your title. Who's the project manager for this study, so I'll hand it over to Joel to, um, give you the presentation and then we're happy to answer any questions.
Sure, yes, good morning Commissioners, I'm, I'm Joel Slavitt and I'm the Acting Program Manager for Active Transportation within the Office of Sustainability and yes, it's part of the Livable Communities Group, thank you, Shonda. Uh, and so, um, I'm going to attempt to share my screen.
Yep, we can see it.
Just switch views, Joel, there you go, that looks good.
Alright, cool. Uh, so, um, one thing I, I just want to point out before I get into this, um. Study is that, uh, in addition to today's presentation, uh, we are proposing to come back to the planning commission. Uh, during subsequent stages, uh, including, uh, the point where we will be reviewing proposed design alternatives and after the study report is released. So the goal of this study is to overcome barriers to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety and access within the project study area in North Fair Oaks. It's also about equity and prioritizing improvements to make it easier to walk and bike in a community. That has a relatively higher concentration of vulnerable residents than other parts of the county. Many of whom are transit dependent and may not have access to a car. Looking at adjacent Redwood City and Atherton on both sides of North Fair Oaks, these communities have multiple crossings of the Caltrain tracks. However, in North Fair Oaks, there is only one crossing of the Caltrain corridor, which is that Fifth Avenue. We're looking to build upon recommendations from the twenty eleven North Fair Oaks Community Plan, which called for a new crossing of the Caltrain tracks. And the county's recently adopted Active Transportation Plan to further explore concept plans for community-supported bicycle and pedestrian improvements. And I'd also like to acknowledge and point out that this study is being made possible through the award of a Caltrans Transportation Planning Grant. So there are a number of desired outcomes from this study, which include community-supported preferences for. The location and design of a new bicycle and pedestrian crossing of the Caltrain tracks, which can either be a, a bridge over or a tunnel underneath. Bicycle and pedestrian enhancements on local streets that can provide a connection to the rail crossing as well as numerous destinations on both sides of the tracks. And then once the study is complete with a defined scope of improvements, we want to be able to position the county to be competitive for future grant funding opportunities to turn the community's vision into a reality. So the project study area is bounded by Middlefield Road to the north, Fifth Avenue to the east, El Camino Real to the south. And the unincorporated county border with Redwood City to the west. The Caltrain Corridor is a four-track railroad here that separates residents from many local destinations that are relied upon to meet daily living needs. A number of these destinations are called out on the slide, such as the community center and the library on one side, and we have Target Shopping Center on the other side. Because Fifth Avenue is, is the only existing crossing of the tracks, residents without access to a car may need to walk or bike over a mile to reach destinations. That could otherwise be a few short blocks if there was another crossing of the tracks. And I'd also like to say that the North Fair Oaks Community Plan identified two potential, uh, crossing locations, one here at Pacific. And the other at Berkshire, um, but a potential location for a crossing isn't limited to just these two sites. And while there isn't a Caltrain station in North Fair Oaks, Samtrans bus routes traverse the perimeter of the study area and the blue bus symbols. Uh, here is noted on El Camino and Middlefield, um, denotes, denote bus stops in the area. So our project structure includes a county project coordination team, which actually Shonda is a member of as well as myself. And we have a team of consultants that include two local community-based organizations, New West Rokasa and Redwood City together as funded community partners. Key stakeholder committees and a general community at large will also have opportunities to participate. We have a community advisory committee that's comprised of key community leaders and stakeholders that represent the diverse interests of the community. And a technical advisory committee comprised of staff from a variety of different county departments as well as external agencies. Uh, there also are outreach phases where the general public can comment on, as actually noted on the next slide. So our study development process will be taking place over a two-year timeframe and we're still fairly early in the process, as you can see from the, so we are here bar. Um, but the key phases of work include a summary of existing conditions that includes a community needs assessment. And the development of concept design alternatives for the rail crossing and bicycle and pedestrian improvements on local streets. Uh, the valuation of, of different design alternatives ultimately leading to preferred alternatives for the rail crossing and bicycle and pedestrian improvements on local streets. And the preparation of a draft and final study report. And there are opportunities for the community to participate during these different phases ranging from, uh, the recently completed, uh, community needs assessment. Through the evaluation of alternatives and the draft study and these little, uh. Uh, bubbles here represent the different, uh, outreach, uh, base opportunities. So one of our first activities was to have a series of focus group meetings with community partners to seek input on how best to engage with the community. We developed an engagement plan with goals to involve the community at places where they go, making it easy to engage. Inform and educate and connect to gather feedback to reflect community needs and priorities. Our first phase of engagement took place, uh, roughly over a four-week period from June, June eleventh to July eighth. And I'll touch upon some of the activities that took place during that time. We held ten pop-up events to personally engage with community members and have meaningful conversations. We held these events at a variety of places where residents already go, such as Casa Circulo. Uh, where youth and adults go for local art and cultural programming activities, uh, we went to a number of local supermarkets such as Chavez, Willow and Me Rancho Markets. And, uh, food distribution sites, uh, at St. Anthony's and the North Fair Oaks Library. We also presented at, uh, an English and second language class at Familias Unitis, uh, which is a local community-based organizations. Uh, and we've gone to a community advisory bodies that have included the North Fair Oaks Community Council and the county's Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Of course, we're here making our first presentation to the planning commission today. We had a bilingual survey in both, uh, paper and online forum that was in, uh, both, uh, English and Spanish. Uh, we also, in fact, I'll point out all the written materials that were distributed were available in both, uh, English and Spanish. Um, we also mailed postcards to approximately seventeen hundred different addresses in the study area and we asked our partners. Uh, to promote the survey and notify their followers in their newsletters and social media. And then I'd also like to point out, we actually have a new webpage up and running, it's, uh, WWW NFO Walkbike.org. Uh, that provides further information about our study and space for people to send comments. So these are a few photos that were taken from some of our pop-up events that took place during our first phase of outreach. And we recently received a summary of results from our first phase of community engagement and the next few slides that I'll go over, um, will, uh, show some key takeaways from our survey. When asked how folks typically cross the Caltrain tracks, although most said they drive. A very high percentage of respondents said they walk and the third highest respondents was that they bike. This is in line, uh, with what we found from our Active Transportation Plan that identifies North Fair Oaks as a community with some of the greatest demand for walking and bicycling in the unincorporated in county. In part due to density and the mix of land uses. We also asked community members how the Caltrain tracks affect how they travel today. The top response was that many drive, but they would prefer to walk or bike if it was possible. The second highest response was that for those who use another form of transportation instead of driving, such as walking or biking. It's difficult to do so because distances are far. And then I also want to point out that, uh, almost a quarter of those that responded said they don't travel to the other side of the tracks. Or they do so less often because it's difficult to get there. When asked for the top three issues that affect comfort and, uh, comfort walking and biking, speeding. Poor lighting and street crossings that don't feel safe were the top responses. And then finally, uh, personal security, feeling safe and visible. Convenience being in a location that is the shortest distance to destinations. And accessibility for people of all ages and abilities were listed as a top priorities for a new bicycle and pedestrian crossing. So wrapping up with next steps, this coming fall and winter, uh, we're going to be developing alternatives for the railroad crossing and local street improvements. During the spring and summer of twenty twenty-three, we'll be evaluating different design alternatives. Leading to the selection of preferred alternatives for the rail crossing and bicycle and pedestrian improvements on local streets. During the summer and fall of twenty twenty-three, the draft study will be prepared and released for public comment. And we plan on taking the final study to our board for approval during the winter of twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty twenty-four. We actually need to wrap up this study by March of twenty twenty-four, uh, to meet the, uh, grant, uh, grant timeline. Ideally, uh, after the study is approved by our board, we will take subsequent steps to seek funding, uh, to design and build out our study recommendations. And then in terms of coming back to the planning commission at future meetings, I would say late winter, early spring, um. And then the fall of twenty twenty-three would be good opportunities when we're taking input on the evaluation of our design alternatives and then ultimately after our draft study is released. Uh, so with that, uh, this concludes the presentation, please feel free to visit our project website at, you know, WWW NFO Walkbike.org. We also have a general email address as shown in the slide, where you can send comments and questions regarding our study and I'll be happy to entertain any, you know, comments or questions, uh, that you may have now.
Right, uh, thank you. Yeah, any, uh, comments from, uh, Commissioners, Commissioner Ketchum?
Oh, uh, just thank you for your, for your report.
Oh, just thank you for your for your report. No questions.
Mrs. Gupta?
Very concise presentation of Mr. Slavich. I would like to ask if that can be made available to us. It could be put on the same website here. It it's so concise, very visual rather than reading all the text in the report. Okay. Yes, so my questions are. Do we have some information about the demographics of the people? Like, by demographics, I mean age groups of people who'll be using this bu- bikes, like we talk about bikes and walking. Are they younger people, older people? Do we have any information on that?
Sure, it's yeah, so it's a it's a mix of a variety of different age cohorts. I can tell you, most of the people that responded to our our survey were adults, but there also are a fair number of older adults as well as youth out there. And in terms of other demographics, I mean, the majority of the population out there is Hispanic. There is a fair number of immigrants that live out there. And can also tell you that that some of what we found during our research and we were actually preparing the grant application is that this area has among the highest concentrations of households that don't have access to an automobile of all of the county.
Okay, and so were you happy with the response that you got, like the active participation at your different events, public events that you had?
Yeah, so I will say that this is a community that is very challenging to reach. It's the people who live there are not the type that typically show up to like, you know, your city hall kind of meeting or or, you know. They don't necessarily have the same level of participation and and online access. One of the things that we made clear when we put out our request for request for proposals for this project was that the consultant team needed to include community-based organizations so that to help us do our outreach to, you know, to receive input from the community and those community-based organizations, the West for Casa and Redwood City together. They both use Promatoris, which are people who actually live in the community and they're trained to help do public outreach. They're familiar faces. And I can tell you that they were instrumental in the input that we received. You know, they they speak Spanish. Again, you know, they're they're people within the community. We had received a total of three hundred and forty-nine responses to our survey. And I can tell you the vast majority of that because I I tended like eight out of ten of the events and then actually Chanda tended to two others that that I wasn't at. I was out of town. But we, the majority, the vast majority, like, and there's an estimate of, I think, like about three hundred of the three hundred and forty-nine responses are because we we, you know, went to where the people were instead of just putting something out there and having people respond to us because, you know, as I noted, you know, we put out a mailer. You know, our partners helped put out advertisements in their newsletter, you know, the result, social media. But with each individual engagement, I mean, you spent like about ten minutes because we actually like helped walk the people through the the survey. And then we also had poster boards and engaged with them. So it was really meaningful engagement. So I would say I think we did do a pretty good job and we did everything we could to receive as much input from the diverse community that's out there.
Okay.
I just wanted to add, if I could, which is that, you know, I I think we did a lot of research before, you know, our in-person events also with our community advisory committee to sort of ask where we should go, where do they think would be a good place to do some of our pop-up events? And that's sort of how we planned it out. And, you know, we pretty much would get like, I think our lowest end was maybe on the thirty person, really more like fifty to a hundred, sometimes depending, higher, depending on where we were. And I think we learned, you know, which places had programming, maybe we would come back next phase at a different time. You know, I think Joel didn't mention that one of the engagement events that he went to was at Chavez Market where we worked with multicultural institutes to engage day laborers specifically. And that was really critical, you know, hostway probably pre-met with the day laborers. They knew that we were coming. So we use a lot of different methods, knowing to teach, especially this first phase, to really see what would what worked well. I think we have a lot of lessons learned that we can apply to our next phase of engagement.
Okay, yeah, yeah, because I live in South San Francisco and we have we have a big more than one third of the population is Hispanic, Latino and 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 others. I'm not just talking about one particular sector of the population. And people don't even show up for these things. And then, once the project is built, then they complain about it that as as if this is the first time they came to know about it. And then they want to give their inputs there. And I'm sure it's happening all over all over the place. So so that's that's where my questioning was coming from is that people are so busy these days, raising their families and taking care of their children and their needs and their jobs kind of things. So so one of the things on your these charts, I saw that people were concerned, they had concern about why they don't go across the tracks because of many safety reasons. So so are are you looking into that, how to address those? Those safety reasons, like, how to make it safer for them?
Yes, that's a key part of the study. That's a phase that we're moving into right now with the development of design alternatives, both for improvements on local streets and the rail crossing itself.
Okay, okay. Because all over the county, I see these bike lanes being added to the streets, right? But but automobile traffic is not really conducive to those. They they always, they see a bike and and the first thought that goes through the driver's mind is, oh, another bike on the street, right? Because it slows them down as a driver. So that is still a concern. That's still a safety concern, both for the for the bike or or even if there's a pedestrian for the pedestrian as well as for the automobile driver. So so I'm sure you are aware of all those. So are you part of the consulting consultant team or?
I work for the county.
You work for the county.
Yes, I I work with the consultant teams as well as Chanda too.
So so are the consultants going to address today's meeting also or no?
Any feedback that you provide to us, we will share with them.
Okay, okay. All right. Now, I think this is a very good report. I read your staff report very thoroughly. And I think that there's a lot of information in here, very concise. And I'll come back to it. I'll give others a chance to comment and ask their questions. Thank you.
Sure, Chanda gets the credit for the staff report.
Mr. Hanson, your comments?
Yes, so I'm looking at your map where you have the crossing on Pacific. Why Pacific and not Dunbar?
So, all right, so. Helpful by pull up the slide again. Let's see, give me just a minute. Are you able to see that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, let me see if I can blow it up more. Oh, that was bad. Give me just a second, I'll get to it. Okay, you're you're able to see the slide, I presume?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so we're not saying that. So, okay, so these two yellow circles with the Xs through them at Pacific and Berkshire. Those are two locations that were called out in the North Fair Oaks Community Plan. We are not limited to looking at at these two sites. We are also exploring Dunbarton as well as a potential connection to the Middlefield Junction Affordable Housing Project.
My observation of studying and it your urban planning, which is now fifty years old, half a century old, mind you. Look, you know, if you have it on Pacific, that's ideal for the people who live on the El Camino side of the tracks because it moves them into all the things they want to could could want to access on the Middlefield side. But if it was on Dunbar, that provides more access mentally, dealing this mentally, not actuals for the people on the Middlefield side getting to El Camino. And to me, you know, that is a more ideal site because it only disadvantages one and a half houses get getting down to Dunbar for for the people who are on the El Camino side. And you know, there's better ways of me trying to think of how I was taught a half a century ago, but that was the immediate area I would have targeted, but that's just my comment. I do like where it's going. Understand the paths and routes that you got going there and why. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Serrano Quan?
No comments or questions on my end.
All right, thanks. All right, my my comments for this. You know, this is a long time coming for me. The the community plan, I participated on that. And even Mr. Steve Monowitz, I remember that he helped us with that. So all these things that you're seeing that have been identified, that's what we worked on. And I thought it would be, it would happen a lot sooner than it's already been eleven years. So I'm I'm glad to see that we're finally moving in the right direction. You know, the the Middlefield project is one of those, and we're moving forward. Which is Steve is going to give me a report, I think, on where we are on on Middlefield. So I'm I'm really looking forward to see, you know, what what we talked about eleven years ago. I'm sure the community has changed some, but the needs are still the same, if not more. Because we are we're the the most, I believe, as of the last census, the most densely populated area in the county. So so we we need better access to for pedestrians and cyclists to be able to move around. Especially the the this barrier that we have with the train tracks. Back in the day, I used to live on the west side, and now I live on the on the east side of the tracks. And there was no barrier chancling fence on the on the tracks. So we always took, you know, the risk and ran across when we were little. But obviously, now the barrier is there, so people can't do that. And actually, people still do it because I see when I drive you know, close by, I see that people have cut the link, the chancling fence to get across. So that's that's a dangerous thing, especially because we have a lot more trains running now than we did back in the day. And with high-speed rail coming along, then it's even gonna get worse, right? So a long time coming. I'm really looking forward to see what the what you find what the community tells you that they want. You will find that the tractors, let's say, because I I think there's, for some reason, when we were going through this, some people were saying that it would create more crime from one side to the other. I I think that's bogus in my mind. I think people need to be able to cross because Middlefield. Well, we we have two situations. We we have Target on one side that people need to go to the store to get, you know, what they need. You know, at that type of store, then we have Middlefield that is kind of like, you know, the other hub of the community. And so people need to be able to go back and forth. And and as you point out, we we have one of the highest number of, you know, people that do not own cars in the community. So you you see people all the time just walking or biking. We're one of the highest, I'm sure, in the area that that use that form of transportation. So anyway, I'm just really looking forward to see what you come back with. And along the way, I think I'll I'll probably show up to some of those meetings to to listen to people. All right. So that those are my comments. So thank you, guys. We should we open for maybe public comment at this time?
Jennifer, Mike is not working now at all.
At all?
Oh, now, yeah, now we can hear.
I have no idea what's going on on my computer. I think the docking station is on, and so it's kind of interferes with the sound. So I'm gonna just go ahead and how about now? Better?
No, it's the same, but my end, but we can hear you. Go ahead and.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, no, no public comment, no hands raised. We're good to go.
Well, I I think did we announce that now is opportunity for the public to comment if they showed so desire? I just want to make sure that.
Open for this item. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. Please go ahead and do so now.
Thank you.
There are no hands raised. Thank you, Chair.
All right, so we'll close public participation at this time on the on the item. Any any last comments, guys? Anybody raise your hand? Go ahead, Mr. Hanson.
I was on the Planning Commission when this all started.
Yes.
I'm just happy to see it move forward, you know, and being able to be intact to what everybody wanted to happen. A lot of times I've seen, and not in this community, but in other communities where you had a plan and it's immediately shelved. You know, this has not happened in North Fair Oaks. And I think that is a statement and to the people who live there to make this happen. It is unique and and it's really enlightening and heartening to me. So go go do it.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yeah, thank you, guys. Thanks again. You're doing a great job and again, looking forward to see, you know, the rest of it. All right, thank you. All right. I think we can move on to our correspondence and other matters. Mr. Monowitz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Janice sent around all the correspondence that we received regarding today's items. Hopefully, you received that. And I do not have any other correspondence to report today.
Okay, a consideration of study session for next meeting?
There is no study session planned for next meeting. We are planning on bringing forth an appeal of a tree removal permit. This is somewhat controversial. are planning on bringing forth an appeal of a tree removal permit. This is somewhat controversial. Uh, heritage tree removal proposal on Fifteenth Avenue in North Fair Oaks. It's a fifty-two inch valley oak, um, with impaired health and poor form right up against the sidewalk. So there's uh differing opinions in terms of the need for removal, so I expect it to be a well-attended meeting.
Great, um, the rectory report?
Yes, um, just a heads up on some of the other items coming your way to begin with, and then I'll be sure to uh cover the reach codes. Um, the uh, so although next meeting is somewhat light, the meeting on uh uh, September twenty-eighth, it should be uh pretty busy. We've got, um, the Pescadero Fire Station LCP Amendment coming before you. This is a change to our local coastal program required to allow the fire station to be located on a site that's been identified in Pescadero, which happens to be outside of the uh municipal services area, and so we're needing to amend the LCP to enable the water line to be distributed there. And there's a number of issues that will come up in conjunction with that, uh, you'll be hearing about. Um, we have the coastal permit for the Quarry Park parking lot expansion, which you heard about um during public comment. I see, uh, Ms. Pollard's still on the line, so, um, yeah, this will inform everybody who's interested that we will be bringing that um forth on the twenty-eighth. Um, and possibly, um, the San Mateo County Parks Project to make improvements at Tunita's speech. Um, we did receive correspondence from the Coastal Commission regarding that proposal, and so we need to work through some issues with them regarding that, which is why I say it's tenuous at the moment. Hopefully, we'll be able to work through that and keep it on the calendar. Um, also coming up, a couple of items at the uh Board of Supervisors on September thirteenth. The board will be considering the appeal of the uh coastal permit for the AmeriGas propane facility out adjacent to the Pillar Ridge Manufactured Home that you uh previously considered. And then we have a number of contracts that will be going to the board uh towards the end of September uh to renew some of our uh Plan Review Services contracts, but also to uh move forward with a couple um new planning initiatives. Um, one, I think I might have mentioned to you, involves um what we're calling the ten-year review of the North Fair Oaks Community Plan. This was requested by the uh Community Council, and um it, I think, um underscores the point that Commissioner Hanson made, and that is that we don't intend to allow the community plan to just sit on the shelf. Um, what we intend to do with this ten-year review effort is to evaluate the progress that we've made in um fulfilling the goals and objectives outlined by the plan, and also to work closely with the community to uh make sure that our efforts moving forward are consistent with their priorities about where they want to see us make progress. So this is um an innovative project. It's the first time I've been involved with a ten-year review of the community plan, and um I'm pleased to report that we received a very good proposal from a firm um of the name Good City, and we'll be presenting that contract to the board at the end of September. Uh, we're also entering into contract to try and bring the update to our tree regulations over the finish line. Uh, as you might recall, Melissa Ross, who was kind of leading that effort, um, has moved on, and we didn't want to lose uh more momentum on that project, so we received a good proposal from a firm, and that is a contract that is within uh an amount that I can approve at the department level, so um that will expedite things moving forward. Um, and then, uh, I think I mentioned last time, we had been targeting uh September uh twenty-seventh as a potential date for the appeal of the Zeme subdivision denial, which was previously considered by the board and continued. Um, it's questionable whether or not we'll be able to uh make that meeting date, but I will keep you posted about that. Um, it's likely to be in October, but since we won't be, well, let's see, we'll be meeting on the fourteenth, so of September, so I can update you on the status of that then. Um, which brings me to um to uh one more announcement before I talk about the reach codes, and that is that um I've learned that of an upcoming training opportunity for planning commissioners. Uh, it's being sponsored by the Institute for Local Government, and it will uh be held in October, on October seventh, and I've asked Janice to pass on that uh information to you. You might have also received um some information from Connie Giraz Dural, who's with the San Mateo County. She's been circulating some information about additional planning commission training opportunities that are being sponsored by the County's Home for All effort. Um, I would encourage you guys to participate if you're available, and if you have any questions about it, um feel free to reach out to myself or to Janet. Um, so with regard to the reach codes, um, the there's really two pieces to it. Um, the first being the all-electric requirement for new development, which has been in place since twenty nineteen. Um, there had been some discussion about expanding that requirement to existing development if it is involves some sort of significant remodel, and you know, we were uh would need to determine what the threshold would be. Um, that is uh not a part of the current reach code package for this cycle. It's something that we're looking to consider in the next cycle. Um, the conversion of existing homes to all-electric presents some challenges beyond, um, you know, doing all-new construction, which is a little bit easier to facilitate all-electric, and so given those challenges, uh, we determined we need more time to work with the builders and the communities to uh evaluate the potential to expand that. So, um, the other component where we are, um, heading in a direction that's a little bit more stringent than the state has to do with uh electrical vehicle charging stations. So as I understand it, the uh new building code issued by the state uh provides three different charging levels and a somewhat complicated and cumbersome formula to figure out how many of each different types of charging levels um need to be provided. Uh, based on the recommendations we've received from Peninsula Clean Energy, we're heading in a direction where new multifamily development should provide um a hundred percent access to electrical vehicle charging in their parking spots, so um essentially, all new multifamily development will need to provide a certain percentage of charging stations, and for each parking space, it will provide, it needs to at least be EV charging ready. So the wires and the infrastructure needs to be there. Um, I know that one of the questions that co- has come up for uh this commission and others in the past is, um, is the uh the grid infrastructure able to accommodate these electric loads? And also, what does it mean for the cost of construction, particularly for affordable housing? So we had a long conversation about that with um representatives from Office of Sustainability as well as Peninsula Clean Energy, and um the information they presented to us is that um PG&E has a new program to address the infrastructure needs outside of, you know, the private properties required to um meet electrical loads for all-electric buildings, and so they are both being uh more proactive about installing that infrastructure, and by doing so, relieving new development from having to carry those costs in conjunction with the development of the project, so uh they feel confident that um the infrastructure will be provided without attaching additional major costs on new development. Um, of course, we'll provide opportunity for those who are involved in constructing these projects to communicate any concerns or questions they may have about that. Um, but at this point, that's the direction we we're headed, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about it.
Uh, alright, any uh questions right now for Steve, uh, Miss Ketchum?
Uh, this isn't about reach, it's about, you said, um, the Board of Supervisors would hear the AmeriGas appeal. What was the date for that?
Uh, September thirteenth.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Uh, Miss, uh, Mr. Hanson, go ahead.
Yeah, just wanna remind everybody that the next meeting, I'll be on a boat at the eighty-fourth latitude north, so I probably won't have access.
Oh, you you're not taking your StartLink telephone?
Oh, I'm taking it. I'll try. But I don't know if I'll have satellite access, but they give it to me, I'll take it.
Got it.
As long as you bring back a picture of the Aurora Borealis.
Oh, well, the sun's gotta set a little longer than an hour.
That's right.
But I'll I'll read up, and I won't be able to visit the the sites.
Yeah, but Miss Scoopda, any any questions?
Uh, yes, yes, one on the reach code. Uh, Steve, you mentioned about the EV charging three levels. That has nothing to do with the residential uh EV charging, right? For single-family homes.
Um, no, the the level of charging uh refers to um the speed at which you can achieve a full charge, so there's some, and I'm by no means um very knowledgeable in this, but as I understand it, there are some really fast chargers that are out there.
Superchargers, so.
Superchargers, and then there's one that's more medium grade, and then there's just making sure the wiring is in place, so you can put a charger in the future. And so the new building code sets standards about certain percentage for each of those different charging types per um new multifamily development. And I think what we're thinking is, um, you know, the use uh of electric cars is at the on a rise at a faster level than I think the uh what the code necessarily specifies, and you know, the last thing we wanna see is, um, people with electric cars and not the ability to charge them, right? So
Right.
We're we're trying to make sure that we address that demand. It did raise an interesting question, though, and that is that, um, oftentimes, you know, those spots are reserved for electrical vehicles only. And if every spot is with an EV charger, what does that mean for folks who don't have an electric car yet? Uh, they need a park too, so um I think, you know, we'll have to think about establishing, um, you know, requiring the infrastructure to be there, but to not necessarily limit the parking to only electrical vehicles, so everybody who lives on the site will have a space to use.
Yeah, yeah, no, I have seen a lot of parking spaces which are empty if you don't have a EV, you cannot cha- park it there, right? You cannot park it, okay, so that's about that. Uh, then I had a couple of other uh questions. Uh, just recently, Daily Journal talked about the Query Park pump track is a hit. Uh, that they had a long article about that. I didn't know that the po- pump track was already inaugurated. Uh, because planning commissioners used to get invitation to the inauguration before.
Oh, I apologize, you know, um, I don't think I received the uh invitation to that, um, opening either, so I apologize. I think we would have passed it on, we we had gotten one, but.
Right, okay, no problem, no problem, but that's good to know. Good to know that it's up and running, and people are using it. I guess, uh, our public speaker knows about it, right? Because her neighborhood is full of uh cars and trash. Okay, and the second thing I wanted to um find out, if if it is possible, is for us to have access to the Daily Journal uh in daily editions, because many of the articles we cannot access, because we don't have um subscription to it. It does county have subscription to it?
Not to my knowledge, no, and yeah, I don't have any experience where the county would um purchase subscriptions for its commissioner.
Yeah, because I can only read one uh paragraph of it, of an article, and then uh it says, if you if you are the subscriber, you can read the rest of it, otherwise you don't. Okay, alright, so we don't have that. Uh, okay, and you already addressed the Zeme, because I ran into Dave Pine, and he was uh concerned about that one too, so I wanted to check. But that is not happening till October, to your knowledge.
Um, if there's a very small possibility of it happening on September twenty-seventh, but I I think unlikely, and I'll be prepared to update you on that when we meet on the fourteenth.
Okay, okay, thank you, thank you. No further questions.
Yeah, I think, um, Mr. Serrano Quan, do you have any comments or question?
I don't at the moment, thank you.
Alright, uh, Steve, um, just uh going back, uh, you know, the, um, I I would like to know how the the Middlefield project is going. Um, uh, because I, like, I I read a uh an article about the uh, you know, the people getting tired of how long it's taking and stuff like that, so just kinda wanna know where we are at. Um.
Yeah, I'm I'm looking uh through my notes, because I did, um, have a meeting with uh Public Works the other day, and it came up, as I understand it, I, um, and I'm still looking here, I think they, um, the construction is supposed to begin in April of twenty twenty-three and be wrapped up by the end of that calendar year.
Hmm, okay. Uh, what so what what phase of that, I'm sorry?
Uh, that's the construction phase.
But I thought we were already in the construction phase, because.
I think, yeah, I mean, uh, um, I I'll have to go back and check with them, um, but I I think you're looking, if I understand your request, uh, Chairman, is you'd like to get maybe a more detailed presentation before the commission from the Public Works Department, so we can talk about more of the details of this, so I'm happy to make those arrangements.
Yeah, that that would be great, because I I think I really would like to understand where where we stand and what we're looking at with the regards to, you know, the the total completion of it.
Right.
Uh, because it's definitely, um, for a lot of those businesses along Middlefield, uh, you know, it's it's been difficult for them. Um, and and what I said, because I I thought we were now in the face of construction as as they're doing, like, one side of the street is already, uh, the the sidewalks are going in right now, so it's all barricaded all the way along that area. So they still have to finish that one side and then move over to the other side. And then, so what's what's the what's the next steps, what's the next phase, all that stuff? Um, yeah, uh, and yeah, it'd be interesting, uh, going back to what you were just mentioning about the the uh charging, what is needed, or what where are we gonna move with that? Um, my concern is always more of the, uh, like like you say, I think you mentioned that the, you know, we we may be moving faster than we thought about, um, electric vehicles coming along the way. Um, and my concern has always been the generation of electricity. Um, and how that impacts if we move uh to electrify houses to require that the houses are completely just depending on on electricity, um, and finding like, uh, you know, PG&E is thinking about raising um the service or the the fee that they charge for people who are connected with the grid. Um, I think right now the charge is fifteen dollars as the fee for people who are connected. That may go up to like sixty or seventy dollars. That's a significant jump. Um, so anyway, yeah, generation, um, all that, you know. Uh, anyway, so that we'll see what where we end up with all that. Uh, anyway, so that we'll see what where we end up with all that stuff. Looking forward to it. Okay, if there are no more questions or comments, I think uh this meeting is now adjourned. All right. So I'll see you guys next.
See you next time.
Next time, guys. Thank you, thank you all for, all right, bye.